So next up, we will have our Cobb County School Board contested commission candidates. This will be for Commission District Three. The candidates are James Smith, otherwise known as Jim, and Caroline Holcomb. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners, or the Board of Commissioners itself is the oldest form, one of the oldest forms of government in America, and it's still alive and well today in Cobb County. In the county commission form of government, a body of elected commissioners serve both the executive and legislative roles, having duties, meaning they enact local ordinances and administer them. They approve budgets, oversee spending, and hire county employees. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners consists of five people, or five elected commissioners, and one elected chairman and four elected county commissioners. Sorry. Three seats on the Cobb County Board of Commissioners are up for election this year. Primary elections, we know, will be on May 22nd. Early voting has already started. We'll start with opening statements. And Ms. Holcomb, if you would mind giving us your first opening statement. Three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for hosting, Mr. Owens. I really appreciate the opportunity to sit before my fellow Democrats and talk about why I'm doing this. I moved to Cobb County approximately 10 years ago. My husband and I are from New Orleans, and we moved here for the greater opportunities and all of the wonderful things that Cobb County has to offer. And over the years, I've watched those things be chipped away gradually by millage rates that are much too low, apathy from our elected officials, and very bizarre decision-making that flies in the face of common sense on zoning. Too many impermeable surfaces, high-density developments where there shouldn't be any, and continual violation of the land use plan that was put together by people who were really committed to having a vision for the future. So the reason that I'm before you right now is because I think that we can do better. I think that we can fully fund the services that make Cobb County great. I think that we can follow our land use plan, and I think that we absolutely can support all of our staff in receiving a living wage. Currently, starting salary for a police officer is about $40,000. I want you to know that the food stamp qualification limit for a family of four is $4,000 a month, which is more than $40,000 a year. That's just one of the things that I would like to address. Also, recently, property tax bills have started arriving in people's mails. And I want to make it clear that when I said that I support an increase in the millage rate, that was predicated on the idea that the property tax assessments would be fair and sane and not artificially inflated by McMansion comparables in neighborhoods next to existing neighborhoods, which is, quite frankly, happening a lot in Cobb County. I am not trying to tax anyone out of their home, and I'm starting to suspect that some of the currently, one lady mentioned her property tax had gone up by $700 with this most recent assessment, and that is a lot in one go when the average home would see an increase of $100 a year with one mil. So I'd like to bring, I'd really like to review the assessment process and remind everyone that you can request that your assessment be reviewed. There is an appeals process, and you should use it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Mr. Smith, your opening statement, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jim Smith. I was the first qualifying Democrat candidate for Cobb County Commission District Three in over 20 years. I'm a disabled military veteran, having served on active duty in Vietnam and as a reservist at Dobbin's Air Force Base where my unit was called back to active duty for Desert Storm. After retiring from the Cobb County Water System as a project manager for 21 years of service, after Katrina, I worked for Brown and Mitchell in Gulfport, Mississippi, overseeing $350 million worth of utility rehabilitation projects from bid to completion. For the last seven years, I've worked closely with the Canton Road Neighbors Association regarding zoning and other issues along the Canton Road Corridor. As a 64-year resident of Cobb County, I've watched this county grow from a rural area with one major industry, Lockheed Aircraft, to a high-density metropolis in the last 50 years. We are now facing a critical budget issue. There is a very strong possibility that Cobb County will lose its AAA bond rating. This will cost the county greatly in its ability to easily obtain future bonds and to get the best interest rate possible. There's a major transit decision looming in the future that is critical to all residents of Cobb County. It has been imposed upon us by the state. Again, we have disgruntled employees who've been told not to expect a raise for the next three years. Cobb DOT maintenance is down right now about 50 to 60 people. The water system has recently lost several wastewater operators. Libraries are on the chopping block. Seniors are being charged to use the facility they paid for. And now the board is talking about more services being cut and closing entire departments. The current sitting commissioner recently bragged that we have the lowest property taxes in the metro area and has never voted for a tax increase. But at what cost to the residents has this been done? I want to see this county to continue to prosper in a way that is beneficial to the residents and the county overall. It's time for someone to start making good decisions for this county and someone with a fresh perspective for acquiring green space, dealing with future zoning issues, getting the county back to delivering the services that we, as citizens, want, need, and have paid for. It's going to take a strong, experienced person to take this seat, one who is knowledgeable about the county's workings and has experience in its internal workings. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. So the first question I want to go to is one I'm sure won't surprise anyone, and still on some recent activity around transit. So last week, House Bill 930 was signed into law by our governor. This bill creates a state-level regional transit, regional transit authority called the ATO, Atlanta Regional Transit. As it relates to Cobb County, there's still several things that we have to do or have to take place before the new law would impact Cobb County citizens. Do you support creating a special tax district for this, or do you feel that all Cobb residents should take part in funding any mass transit that would be created in Cobb County? First question or answer, Jim?
It's going to be very tough to sell a county-wide transit system here in Cobb County. It's been tried before, but I think it needs to go on a referendum and let the county, county citizens decide which they want. Do they want it countywide? Do they want to join MARTA? Or do they want a transit district? However they do it, unfortunately, the way that law's written, the whole county's going to be on the limb for it. If a district is set and it doesn't pay for itself, then the rest of the county's going to be responsible for making up the difference. But I think it has to go on a referendum. We don't need any more behind-the-scenes deals done and decisions made. This is something that everybody who's involved in the county should be involved in for this transit referendum, and that is the only way I think it should be done.
Great. So thank you. So as a follow-up to that, would you be an advocate for expanding MARTA or joining the ATO link or creating a new transit system that involved mass transit in Cobb?
That's something that unfortunately, nobody's put any money out there on yet, and I'd have to see the dollars on it. Now, I would favor a north-south corridor from Acworth to Cumberland and along the 75 Cobb Parkway corridor. That's where we really need it to get traffic off the road. That would be a traffic reliever as much as anything else. But until somebody starts coming up with dollars, I'd have to wait to see.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Holcomb, same question. Do you support creating a special tax district, or do you feel that all the Cobb residents should take part in funding any expansion that included mass rail or mass transit for Cobb County?
I feel like the idea that Cobb County doesn't want transit is a little bit of an outdated and, well, wrong. People that I talk to want transit. There are other cities that have thrived once they got transit in, and as such, I would like to see the entire county take full advantage of the opportunity that House Bill 930 presents to us to create our own transit system, to link up with the existing MARTA system and expand the transit that we already have. I would also like to see the transit options that we have right now in Cobb County receive a marketing budget of more than zero, because it's hard to ride a bus that you don't know exists. There are choices. I believe that Cobb County is ready for transit, and I believe that stating that Cobb County doesn't want transit is pandering to the same sort of dog whistle nonsense that got us in this situation in the first place.
Great. Thank you. To stay with you, Ms. Holcomb, along the same lines of transit, there has been a lot of discussion over the last several years fighting for flex buses and other transit options, transit on Sundays and transit that goes outside of regular working hours. Would you support these measures, and how would you look to find funding for that?
I believe I've mentioned a few times that I absolutely am in favor of a millage rate increase, although I do want to modify that that statement is predicated on sane and reasonable tax assessments, property assessments, which I'm not 100% sure is happening right now. So I will have to walk that back just a bit until I see how it's impacting our, how the tax assessment rate is impacting our budget. But flex buses are a fantastic idea to expand transit step by step into neighborhoods that historically have not been considered ready for it. You don't have to have any bus stops. You don't have to have any specific routes. And because of the way the flex system works, if Sandy Plains and Piedmont is backed up again, the flex bus would have the option of going around because it's not bound to specific collection points. So I think that the flex service should absolutely be expanded countywide. In particular, we don't have anything that goes entirely from north to south or east to west. So those particular places need to be covered.
Thank you. And same question to you, Mr. Smith. Having the ability or looking at the ability to offer more expanded services, which we already have, such as a flex bus or extended hours or additional routes, would you be in support of those measures? And if so, where would you find the budget funds for that?
We need to have some type of rapid transit or major transit. The problem is, is that currently, right now, the current system is funded largely by the county general fund. The system is not paying for itself. It's not even breaking even. There are ways to do it. I think we could do it, but it's going to be a hard job to get the system in and get it running because there are just a lot of people that are going, "I don't ride it. I don't want it." And you're going to have to convince those people that we do need it. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking that if, even if you put on a referendum and you ask if they wanted it and you gave them a choice, none of the above, unfortunately, I think you might get none of the above. But we're going to have to do something. There's no doubt in my mind. We can't keep building roads. We're out of room.
Thank you, sir. So I'll go into the next question, and I think both of you may have touched on this already. As Cobb County is facing a massive budget shortfall, some of us made between $30 and $45 million for this coming fiscal year. To close the gap, our current chairman, Mike Voice, has suggested that we propose an increase in property taxes for 2019. He's also considered fee increases for senior citizen services, among many other things, and possible closings and consolidations of our library-school systems. What would be your specific plan, and how do you agree or not agree with the current chairman? Ms. Holcomb?
So in the beginning, I originally supported a one-mil increase in the property tax, which for the average home in Cobb County, which the average is about $249,000, would result in a property tax increase of about $100 a year, which is less than $10 a month. Right now, I'm not sure what the numbers are going to be because the property tax estimates that are being sent out right now are truly wild. I do not support the raising of any fees for any service that has traditionally been free to Cobb County residents. In fact, this senior center fee of $60, $25 to rent a pavilion at the park, and $25 to use the community room at the library, and you're, you've already spent more than what a one-mil tax increase would cost you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question to you, sir.
We should not be making our seniors pay for, to use a space that they already paid for in their taxes. And cutting libraries is not a real good idea because they just spent all this money building a couple of new ones. So if you're going to build them, why are you going to close them? You build new senior centers, why are you going to turn around and close them? They keep trying to reach out and find this magic money from the wrong places. They want to cut, now they're talking cutting staff, they're cutting departments. Well, the problem is that they spent the money, and they should have paid attention. And raising the property tax is one of, one of the way to do it. Right now, they would have to raise the property tax anywhere between 1 to 1.8 mil to pay for what they already have as a deficit and to have any cushion. Plus, they've raided the one-time revenues that they had put aside.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to follow up with this because it's obvious it's a contentious subject. 30 to 45 million sounds like a lot of money to me. And simply raising property taxes at a, Ms. Holcomb, you mentioned, at a rather small rate, does not seem to me to equals closing that gap that we're talking about. So to kind of reiterate this, looking at closing the gap between 30 and 45 million dollars, what would both of you suggest is where to start with closing that gap in a significant manner? Mr. Smith?
A one-mil tax in Cobb County will raise approximately $7 million in residential general fund revenues. The rest, which would, is approximately $30 million for the county on a one-mil, comes from the business associations. So that's a $30 million. And the number that you have between 30 and 40 is actually between 30 and 56 million, depending on who you talk to. So do we have a deficit? Is there one out there? Somebody show me the paperwork. I want to see it. I want to see it in black and white. I want to see it line item, because it may be more than that. We don't know. We're just taking the word of five people sitting up here. And that's one of my problems, is that we haven't seen it. They haven't told us where it came from and how it got there, and so far, none of them have come up with a way to fix it. We've got to do that. That is, would be my priority. First thing I would do is insist on them bringing me a budget, line item by line item.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Holcomb.
So as it stands right now, we'll just keep working with the $30 million number since that seems to be the most generally accepted number for the budget deficit. It could be 10 million, it could be 50 million. And it is true that without a line item budget, neither one of us can really assess how to tackle that. So we have to work with the number that we have. What I'm concerned about right now is what should be a modest increase for your average person, if the property tax assessments keep going out as wild as they are right now, that's going to be a problem for a lot of people. There are already some people in Cobb County who are very stressed out about property tax bills that have in some case doubled. So I would have to look at exactly how the assessment is performed, because nobody's property tax bill should go up $700 from one year to the next. That is an absolutely insane amount of money.
Great.
Especially if you're on a fixed income, like a lot of people, a lot of seniors who own their homes and are counting on staying in the mar.
Thank you. So both of you have suggested property taxes and millage increases, but part of this has to be about cutting something somewhere. So what, if anything, would you cut out of the budget? Again, knowing you haven't seen line items, we can also phrase it in a way of how could Cobb County get more efficient potentially with the money they do have that they are spending? Mr. Smith?
There are probably some places, having worked here, I know there's some duplication in some areas. You've got duplication of basic jobs. That needs to be looked at. There's a possibility you can do that. You could also look at combining departments. In some places, you have very few workers and a lot of management. You need to look at that. That's something that has, has been needed in every government and, including our federal government, for years. The county just did a big pay incremental study that was done by a national company. That needs to be looked at also. And you've got to sit down and get into the system and look at it, because for a prime example is, stormwater used to be under the general fund. They took it and put it under waste, underwater, so it could be paid for by water revenue.
Thank you. There's a next question.
Would you like me to answer that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take that back. Yes, please do. Please do.
In a few cases, there may be some departments that are unnecessarily top-heavy with executive staff, which is something that I would want to look at on a light item. But as a general rule, I have to say that I'm not in favor of cutting any services for Cobb County. I already think we have had enough of do more with less, and I would like to do more with more. That's it.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So next question is, what part of the county government would receive immediate attention if you were elected? Ms. Holcomb?
Immediate attention would probably be our frontline safety workers. As I believe I mentioned, our, the current starting salary for a police officer qualifies a family of four to receive food stamps. I really don't think it's fair to ask people who risk their lives to keep us safe to go on government assistance to feed their families. So I would have to put that front and center. The next priority would be keeping our library, senior centers, and parks fee-free, because those are things that, as county residents, those are part of the things that drew my family to Cobb County in the first place. And I don't think I'm alone in that. I think there are a lot of families who come here because of the amazing services that we have, and we have to make sure that the people who keep us safe and the things that make our lives worth living are protected and funded.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Mr. Smith, what part of the county government would receive immediate attention if you were elected?
The first one for me would be our public service people. A 2017 report showed that our firemen are paid 12% under national average and our police are 17% under national average. The second would be the rest of the employees. We have to offer a living wage, and we have to offer benefits to keep the skilled workers and the trained workers here. We're losing them. And as we continue to lose them, we're going to get less skilled people because the wages are not adequate for them. And when you do that, your certain level of service is going to go down. We've got to get our services back to where they were five, six, seven, eight years ago, or even back in 2005 when I retired. We don't even have the level of services now that we had then.
Thank you. The next question I was going to ask was around additional funding and where would that be spent, but I think we have an answer to that. So in light of that, I would ask if, outside of funding, specific revenue that you could add, outside of that, what areas would you go into and what things would you, would you change about our county services that you would do if, where money is not an issue? Mr. Smith?
Well, that's, that's an interesting one. One thing I think we should do is, I think we should put the county employees back to doing what they're supposed to be doing. A lot of them are not doing the job that they were supposed to do because they've been moved over. We've got to get, we've got to get these people back on track and get them running. The other thing is that we've got people out there every day that are doing work that the county should be doing. We've got landscapers cleaning up in front of places. We've got litter crews out there that are not trained for traffic safety, walking up down the side of the highway. That is very dangerous. We've got to stop that. We've got to give the services back that the people need, and that's where we need to focus on. And to do that, we've got to solve that budget problem first, and then we've got to get back 100% on supplying the services, the libraries, the parks, recreational areas, and green, we need more green space. All of those things need to be done immediately.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Holcomb, same question. Looking at making changes that are not dependent solely on funding and resources, what are those things that you would find most interesting and you would want to jump in and help?
So the first thing that we can do that will not cost us a single solitary cent is the Board of Commissioners has the authority to create advisory committees. We have advisory committees for just about every topic you can imagine right now. The, if you go to the website, it's five pages to scroll through. A glaring lack in that list is a Human and Civil Rights Committee. As many of you are aware, many groups in Cobb County face discrimination every single day. I want to hear from those groups. I want to know what we can be doing better to keep them safe and to make sure that they're not threatened and to make sure that they are treated fully 100% as part of our community, because just because somebody doesn't look like me does not mean they're not part of my community. Second, we, in 2008, we fully funded a Parks and Green Space Initiative, and we still haven't spent the money. So I would like to spend that money on actual green space.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Next question actually touches on something that you mentioned there. Cobb County has unfortunately suffered from a reputation and a perception that are not friendly to persons of color, potentially people with lower socioeconomic. What would you do as a member of the Cobb County's Board of Commissioners to make Cobb County a more inviting, welcoming place for all citizens? Mr. Smith?
Well, the, the issue that you brought up goes a little farther back than that. It goes back to the Olympics when a statement was made here about family values. That cost us the Olympics. That was absolutely wrong, and we should welcome anybody into this county. Diversity in the, in the county is already here to some extent, and we've, we've learned to work around it. We've learned to live with it. We've learned how to deal with it, especially with our fire and police. One of the issues that I think we really need to look at really hard is for our police officers, a lot of them to have a second language. We've got a lot of people here that speak very little English. We've got people who are coming here from other countries that are trying to learn. We've got to be much more open to different ideas, to thoughts, and we've got to express ourselves in a polite manner to these people, and we have to understand and recognize their beliefs.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Holcomb, what would you do as a Cobb County Board of Commission member to ensure that Cobb County is a more welcoming and inviting place for all citizens?
Well, I guess I could add a diversity council to my plans for Human and Civil Rights Advisory Council. And simply being, making sure that in our marketing materials, which the county does produce an astonishing amount of marketing materials, so long as they're not related to Cobb Link, make sure that people who are not the typical East Cobb mold are featured in those materials. I know that Cobb County as a whole, taken as a whole, is very diverse, but honestly, if you look at the stats for East Cobb, it's, it's a little bit cookie cutter. So one of the first things is to have exposure. Perhaps we could partner with other districts. And I do think that a diversity council, a diversity advisory council would be a good idea. There are plenty of people who are leaders in that field, who have spectacular ideas and plans to implement them, and I would like to listen to them rather than just make something up myself.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next question. Would citizens get more effective services at a better rate if more functions at the county level were accomplished by contracting with outside companies? Ms. Holcomb?
Oh, I'm sorry. Was that, no. No, that's crazy talk.
Okay.
I'm just going to go with no. I don't, I don't have anything to add. Privatizing has been a hot mess just about every time it's been tried, maybe, and privatization always ends up costing us more money. So if we have the money to spend on private services, I don't see why we don't have it to spend on paying a living wage to the service personnel that we already have.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Absolutely not. I have seen it firsthand. City of Atlanta did it. Fulton County did it. Fulton County paid for it for five years. The contractor went in there, took over their water and sewer system, and his deal was anything under $2,500 repair, he fixed. Anything above that, the county paid for. Well, he didn't fix anything. He let it get bad enough for the county to take over. Five years later, he did not renew the contract. He walked, and it took Fulton County over five years to hire the employees back that they lost, train the employees. train the employees, and fix the problems that the contractor left them with. I saw it happen in Gulfport, Mississippi, Biloxi, Mississippi, Jackson. I've seen it happen in Savannah, Hilton Head. You do not privatize utilities. You do not privatize your police department. You don't privatize anything in the county, other than maybe your extension service.
Thank you, sir. At over 755,000 people, Cobb County is the third largest, third largest county in the state. Do you think that our county commission has done an adequate job providing the proper planning necessary to safely and effectively accommodate such a large and growing county? Mr. Smith?
As far as public safety goes, they've done a pretty good job. We've got a very good fire department. We've got a great ISO rating, which is very important to you if you own a home and you're paying insurance on it. We do need more policemen. We don't have the coverage, I think, with the police that we really need to have. Because in some areas, you get four or five wrecks, and all of your patrol officers are tied up. The city of Marietta did something here recently with their community officers. I've seen that work in some other areas. But they've done a decent job, but we could do a lot better.
Thank you. Ms. Holcomb, same question.
Can you repeat the entire question for me, please?
Yes. At over 755,000 people, Cobb County is the third largest county in the state. With that said, do you think the county commission has done an adequate job of providing the proper planning necessary to ensure the safety and efficiency of accommodating such a large and growing county?
If I thought they had done a good job, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. So I'm just going to go with no. I think there are a lot of ways that we can improve. And I think our community has asked us again and again and again, begged for someone to step up and make a difference. So here we are.
Thank you.
Trying to do things differently.
Next question to you, Ms. Holcomb. Are county land use regulations and permitting processes doing enough to ensure that the public interests are being looked after?
So recently, I've spent a lot of time reading over the Planning Commission documents for things that come up before the Board of Commissioners and in the zoning boards. And a shockingly large majority of the time, the Planning Commission will say, this is a terrible idea. It violates the land use plan. We don't think it's a good idea. And the people who currently sit in these chairs as incumbents will fly in the face of the Planning Commission's recommendations and go, yeah, sure, build it. So I think that the Planning Commission is actually doing a pretty good job at being the Planning Commission. The Board of Commissioners, however, is not doing a good job of listening to the Planning Commission. So I would like to say that if elected, I would do a better job listening to the Planning Commission. Because the Planning Commission recommendations seem to be much more in line with what the community wants. And I, I, I don't understand the disconnect. I honestly don't understand how you can select all of these talented, capable people to make recommendations based on expertise and then completely ignore them.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Mr. Smith, same question to you, sir.
The land use plan and development standards are a guide, but unfortunately, they're not followed a lot of times. A prime example is the development standards. State metal buildings are to be in a light or heavy industrial area. We've got them up and down every road in Cobb County. One of the things I think is happening, and I would like to change that, is that when a request for rezoning comes in, it should meet the criteria of not only the land use plan, but the zoning application. We get stuff that comes in, and I've seen it dozens of times, that, well, yeah, that's the correct zoning, but it's not in the land use plan, or, oh, that's in their land use plan, but it's not the correct zoning for that business. Why do you build, develop standards and guides, and you don't follow them? You've got to follow them. And I think the Planning Commission, for the most part, does that. But I've seen it, same as Ms. Holcomb. They don't follow it.
Great. So we talked about this in the context of Cobb County as a whole. I want to make this more specific now to, to the specific county commission district in which you're running in. Do you think there's been adequate land use plans and proper planning as the growth has continued throughout your part of Cobb County? Ms. Holcomb?
I think that the Planning Commission has really done their best to make sure that projects that come before the Board of Commissioners are well thought out and considered. And they draft these beautiful reports with charts and graphs and eight-by-ten color glossy photographs with circles and lines and a paragraph on the back of each one explaining what it is. But they don't actually look at them. So it really comes back to the disconnect between the Planning Commission, which is full of people who are experts in their field and make very good recommendations and have a deeper understanding of the implications of development than I could if I spent the next five years reading everything I could get my hands on, because they have already done it. They're specialists. So the short answer is, the Planning Commission does a fantastic job being forward-thinking and thinking about the implications of projects that come into our county. However, the motivations of the Board of Commissioners and their astonishingly high rate of approvals is beyond my comprehension.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question. As we dive into post, or District Three within the Cobb County, within Cobb County, do you think the Board, do you think that the Planning Commission and land use has been effective within your part of the county?
It depends on what part of the district you're in. It, there seems to be certain areas in, in our district that you get metal buildings. Then there's other areas where you get brick buildings. There are some areas where you've got a intense, a highly visible HOA or a civic community that protest or gets involved. And then you've got other areas where you don't get any citizen involvement at all. We've run into that on the Canton Road corridor for the last, I think it's been in business 10 or 12 years now, and they've run into that there. One thing we need to do is we need to get the citizens more involved with every zoning case that's in their area, or it's adjacent to their property. And they, we need to listen to their input. The Planning Commission does a fairly good job. Sometimes the staff does not.
Thank you for that question. Next question is, it's kind of a broad question, but what county agency, what county department do you think needs the most help? And again, not from a financial standpoint, but from an effectiveness standpoint. Mr. Smith?
Right now, it'd be the, a finance department. Because they're having to figure all this stuff out. Next, it would be our DOT, because they're short on people. And then we would need to move down into our public safety departments.
Same question.
I'm going to open with libraries. They are currently on the chopping block, so clearly they need some help. And it's astonishing that that is the first thing that we went to when we had a budget shortfall is libraries. I would also agree with Mr. Smith about the Department of Transportation. There's a lot of construction that goes on in the county. And it's painfully obvious sometimes that there are not enough workers to conduct some of this construction, some of it on very busy roadways with any degree of, of safety inefficiency. So libraries, transportation. I would like to see our public safety workers get salary increases that would raise them out of qualifying for food stamps. Because I, that, it's been bothering me for quite some time that the starting salary of a police officer would qualify his family for food stamps.
Thank you. And, and you're, you're bleeding into my next questions quite often, so I'll just go with this one. Is it better to have more employees at a modest wage or fewer employees at a higher rate, higher wage? Meaning that are we attracting, are we doing a good enough job of attracting the quality of employees that we should within Cobb County government? Ms. Holcomb?
Well, the whole do more with less ethos that's sort of permeating a lot of these discussions is terrible. First, you have to pay people a living wage. And second, I don't think I can answer that question globally. There are some jobs that lend themselves to doing a little bit extra here and there, and some jobs that do not. I don't want my police, fire, or other safety workers exhausted and depleted from their basic responsibilities. I don't want, I don't want to see people constantly under the yoke of trying to do the work of two or three people because the county only has the budget for one. That's unfair, and it decreases the talent pool that Cobb County has to pull, has to pull from. As one of the largest counties in the metro area and as one of the most affluent districts in Cobb County, it's ridiculous that that even has to be a question.
Mr. Smith, same question, sir.
Prime example, the senior engineer from Cobb County Water System retired last year. They advertised they had two or three engineers that came in and fit the criteria of the job. All of them turned the job down because of the salary. That's wrong. When somebody can go outside and make more money than they can working for the government, in, in this government, especially in Cobb County, we've got to do something about that. Basically, you've got to look at each department, case by case, to see what you have to do. Chief engineer for the water system is a very important job. Police chief, the police chief is a very important job. The head of public safety. We need to be bringing in the top-of-the-line people. Now, you can bring in lower-wage people, but the thing is, is you've got to promote them. You've got to move them.
Thank you, sir. Next question has to do with Cobb County as a whole looks to competing with the other counties across the state for jobs and for industry. So as Cobb County presses on to become part of the global fabric of the metro Atlanta environment, what does Cobb County government need to do to ensure that we're an attractive place for, for organizations and businesses? Ms. Holcomb?
One of the first things that Cobb County will have to do is to correct the perception that we're unwelcome to diversity and that we're unwelcome to transit and that we're unwilling to pay a living wage. I can't imagine a business looking at that and saying, well, they don't have any transportation. They can't stand diversity, and they're discriminatory, and going, great, let's, let's move there. So that's a perception that we really have to work extra hard to correct. I know for a fact that the perception of Cobb County, East Cobb in particular, as this monolithic conservative stronghold is incorrect. You have two Democratic candidates running for District Three Commissioner. That alone makes it a lie that Cobb County is some sort of monolithic conservative stronghold. I think that we should promote diversity. We should promote a living wage, and we should promote transit. And those are the keys to making us competitive with other metro counties.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Mr. Smith, same question, sir.
We need to attract more business, especially small business, mom-and-pop business. That's what we need in here. We've got plenty of big business right now. We've got huge businesses here. But we don't have small, local businesses that offer services that the people need. That's the first thing we need to do. Because you cannot attract other business, home buyers, without having libraries, senior centers, parks, playgrounds, athletic facilities, green space, trails, bicycle paths. We've got streets out here with 14-foot-wide lanes on some of them, 12 on others. Why can't we make them 11 and put a bicycle path in? You know, that's what you have to do. You have to give the people that are moving in here a reason to move in here. And they've got to have employment. We've got open employment around here. If we didn't, you wouldn't have so many companies out here, you know, brokering for people. The employment is here. We just have to get the people here to get to it.
Thank you. Next question is, what experience do you have in creating, managing, preparing budgets as it relates to, as it would relate to the Cobb County government throughout your background, past, or history? Mr. Smith?
Well, when I worked for the water system, I handled $35 million average per year on just sewer rehabilitation, plus a bunch of other contracts. I've handled huge contracts in Mississippi. I ran $350 million worth of FEMA contracts. I know how to, how to run a line item budget. I've had to. And you've never met an auditor, till you've met a FEMA auditor, believe me. They dot their i's, cross their t's, and underline them. I've done that. I've had to do it. And budgeting is something that I've always done in, in every job that I've had here. And you have to stay on, on top of it. You can take somebody's word for it, but you better follow up behind them. And that's what needs to be done. Like right now, nobody can tell us an exact dollar figure. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Holcomb, the same question.
So one of my very first jobs was the audit for the Marriott Hotel at their flagship property on Canal Street in New Orleans. An astonishing amount of money flowed through that hotel. And every single night, I counted all their pennies and added them up to make sure that they added up to what they were supposed to be. After that, the overnight schedule was a little rough, so I left that and moved on to nonprofit arts management, which is primarily grant-funded. With grant funding, if you fail to comply with a single solitary grant requirement, not only do you have to pay the money back, your organization will be blacklisted from receiving funds. So I think I have a pretty clear understanding of how critical budgets are. And also, I'm just going to throw a shout out to all my moms here. I am a full-time homemaker and homeschooler. And as such, I am 100 responsible for every cent that is spent in my household. And that can be difficult.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Next question is an interesting one. It will leave us a little open-ended because it's about what your first 100 days would be like if you actually got elected to the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. Ms. Holcomb?
One of the first things that I would do is I would like to appoint a lead certified planning commissioner. I would also like to consult a, a good profession, a quality professional auditor to go through the budget and see if there are things hidden in those line items. Because you can, in fact, hide a lot of things in a line item. I mean, at the federal level, I think we all know that they're not really paying $6,000 for toilet seats. Also, develop the aforementioned Diversity Council and Human and Civil Rights Council. Make sure that our libraries are ready to go and verify that the citizens of Cobb County are actually receiving the services that they are supposed to receive, the services that they pay for. And to make sure, I would also like to see how the assessor's office specifically determines how a property's assessed value is raised, because some of those numbers are hanky.
Great. Sounds like a busy 100 days. Mr. Smith, same question to you, sir.
Well, I, I would cut it down from 100 days because the first thing I would do is park myself in the office upstairs. And every day, I would have one department head in my office explaining to me what his problems were, what his funding issues were, what he was doing to keep his department running, and what he needed. And I would start with public safety. Then I would move down to your DOT, your water system, parks and recreation, and your cultural arts group. Because you've got to get it straight from them. After doing that, then I would go visit their facilities and talk to the employees. Because you get more from the employees sometimes than you get from the department heads. I want to know the truth. I want to find out what the real problem is. I want to dig deep. And I can do that. I know where the, I know where the people are. I know how to get in there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Last question. And as I said before, campaigns are all about creating contrast between you and their opponent. So a question is, what uniquely, what unique traits, characteristics, skills, expertise, history do you have that uniquely qualifies you to be the next county commissioner, to be the next county commissioner? Ms. Holcomb?
One of the strengths that I bring to the table that I would leverage for the benefit of all of the citizens of Cobb County is that I clearly have no fear of taking on entrenched ideas. I sincerely believe that Cobb County is better and greater than we've been told we are. We are more diverse, we are more progressive, and a lot of us want the same things. And I want to get those things for us. I have made no bones about the fact that I am a very progressive person. I have been involved in a number of progressive causes, such as Moms Demand Action and Every Town for Gun Safety. I have marched, I have written letters, I have been to meetings, I have stood on the steps of the Capitol with a bullhorn to get the things that our citizens deserve. And I will bring that same level of activism to my position as Cobb County Commissioner for District Three. I believe we can do things differently, and I believe that the appetite is there in Cobb County.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, same question. What uniquely qualifies you to be the next county commissioner?
Well, I have the advantage of having worked here and having worked through, around, over and under the Board of Commissioners. That fact and the fact that I was able to handle $350 million worth of engineering projects in Mississippi after Katrina, plus I'm a very motivated individual. Sometimes I'm pretty hard-headed, but I don't let anybody push me around or coerce me or try to convince me until they can prove to me 100% that I'm wrong. I fight, and I've always been a fighter, and I will continue to fight. I will fight for the employees as much as I will for the citizens, because I think both the employees and the residents right now are not getting what they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this point in time, we will go into our closing statements. And I think, Ms. Holco, you opened, correct?
Yes.
With your opening statement? So, Mr. Smith, would you please start with your opening statement or closing statement?
I'd like to thank Cobb County Democratic Committee for hosting this forum. Cobb is facing an extremely important issue, namely the budget. For reasons that were purely political, the millage rate was rolled back for bragging rights. Then a majority of the board refused to raise the millage rate when they saw deficit was imminent. And the board artificially boosted the general fund by dipping into various reserve funds, some of them one time, some of them continuous. Now, because of this, the AAA bond rating is in a serious jeopardy. Losing AAA bond rating will not only hurt Cobb County, but it will indirectly harm every property owner, residential as well as business. The board believes that cutting staff and more services is the ultimate answer to repairing the current financial problem. This will not fix the problem. Today, because of the actions of the current board, Cobb has become reactive to issues and problems, whereas in the past, it was proactive. We must end this cycle, or we all lose. I have experience in keeping projects within budget and auditing. I have worked with zoning and rezoning issues to include negotiations with the developers to ensure they are in the correct land use area and that their application is in a proper zoning classification. Having been a utility manager, I'm very familiar with the impacts of construction on existing sewers, roadways, water lines, stormwater runoff. I want you to remember, your voice is your vote. I urge you to cast a ballot in both primary and general election, but please vote wisely as the candidates you choose must have the strength and the experience to unseat the current commissioner. How you vote will make a direct impact on issues pertaining to you, your family, and your property. I'd appreciate your vote on May 22nd and against in, again in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Holco, your closing statements, please.
I got into the race for a county commissioner after hearing that the libraries were going to be closed. Started scratching the surface of what the county commission does and discovered an enormous disconnect between what the citizens were saying that they wanted and what the county was actually giving them. I want to end that disconnect. I believe that Cobb County is ready to have transit. I believe that Cobb County values the services that it receives. I believe that senior centers should be available at no fee to seniors who have, in fact, already paid for it. I believe that we should preserve our green space and follow the recommendations of the planning commission when considering new projects. I think that there are a lot of ways that Cobb County is different than it was when our current Board of Commissioners took their seats. I don't understand how some of them have kept their seats as long as they have while everything changes around them, but yet they stay the same. It is the right of every citizen to be represented, and I would like to earn your vote by saying that I will represent you to the best of my ability. I hear you, I know who you are, and we're ready to do things differently. You can visit my website at carolineforcobb.com, and I'm also on Facebook as Caroline for Cobb. Any questions you have individually, send them to me. I'll answer them to the best of my ability. I hope to, I hope that you will go into the polls on May 22nd and choose Caroline for Cobb. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holco.